I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission June 25, 2019, meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the May 28, 2019, regular meeting minutes.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes passed. First item of business, site plan requested by CDC LLC for 135 Old Nashville Highway. Property located at 135 Old Nashville Highway, tax map 15M, Group B, Parcel 2. C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District. Property owned by Khalil Wagdi, P. Etuk, Itucks, Basam Munshur. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is 135 Old Nashville Highway, and they've been here several times in the past few months, and they somewhere have ran out of steam, so tonight is a formality for them. They have quit responding, I guess you would say, several weeks ago, or maybe a month ago. So, you may remember when this first came, and they did show up, they had a lot of site problems, and you can see that it's a very irregular lot. It's L-shaped, and the building they were proposing didn't fit, it didn't even fit into the site, so we had asked them to reduce the building, and we never heard back. That was the layout. And then here are some pictures. So, it's near the railroad viaduct, and the railroad track would be back here. This line of trees is along the railroad. Then there's the intersection nearest to the Ingress Egress, which their Ingress Egress would be back here. But anyway, they apparently are not wishing to move forward at this time, so according to the rules of the Planning Commission, this is the last night that they could be approved, and since they didn't show up, I guess you all will need to vote.
Thank you. Is there a representative for this project here this evening?
Mr. Chairman, with this, in several months, not, no action, and they've not been showing up to address our terms, and with 11 items not been addressed, I make a motion to deny the application submitted due to the 11 items as listed on the staff's plan.
We have a motion to deny due to the technical items. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Final plat, second re-subdivision of Lot 3, Section 1, Waldron Business Park requested by Bird Surveying. Property located on Waldron Road, tax maps 17, parcel 5.01, I-2 Heavy Industrial and C2 Highway Service Zoning District. Property owned by Bramco Properties, Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is 320 Waldron Road, and it currently is the site that's under construction for the new power equipment facility, and this is 16.7 acres, and it is zoned I-2 and C-2 along Waldron Road. And the only comment from workshop was they needed to add a purpose note to the plat, and the purpose note has been added, and it's in your packets. And that purpose is to delineate the proper easements for the sewer service, and all the other comments have been... Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments for staff or the applicant from the board?
Mr. Chairman, with both items being addressed, and everything else being addressed, the applicant will make a motion to accept a submitted.
We have a motion to accept.
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On the next item. Site plan, LaPorte Building requested by Dale and Associates. Property located at 5242 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15, parcel 9. C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District. Property owned by Jude LaPorte. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This site is located at 5242 Murfreesboro Road, and that's the front of the building. It does have a brick front. This building was originally built as a medical office building several years ago, and the entire building is 6,150 square feet. So, this is on the agenda at the Planning Commission because of the change of use, and they are proposing different uses inside. One is a salon, and the other use is a church, and they have indicated the church would have 60 seats total, and the salon would be 1,000 square feet. And this is just under half of an acre of land, and they had a plan that they turned in in April, and then the next month, in May, they tweaked the parking, and the parking changed a little. There are 32 required parking spaces, and the last plan they submitted showed only 26, so there were six parking spaces short. And you can see striping today on the current parking lot. And then, this is the rear of the building, and the other technical comments, a lot of them had to do with this northwest side of the building, and so this is the northwest side, and there's usually a lot of cars, more often than not, several cars parked on this side, and there's supposed to be a 12-foot wide travel lane on that side of the building, but generally, on day-to-day basis, the conditions of the cars being parked there don't allow for traffic flow around the building that, as it's shown on the plan that they submitted, so that was another concern. There's another view of some of the cars. And then this is at the corner, the back corner of the building, so Murfreesboro Road would be here. And this was another day, so some of the cars have been moved, but it's unclear where that property line is in there, and so last I heard, they were getting it surveyed, and yesterday I was emailed by the applicant, and they said they had a survey complete, so I asked them to bring that with them to the meeting tonight. That pretty much completes the report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Logan, this plan that you have here, explain this to us, what this is?
Yeah, so they've not submitted anything in terms of appropriate number of copies to fill your packets, so I have to revert back to that plan, which is dated May, and so that would be the one that shows the 12-foot wide lane around the building and 32 required spaces, of which a site visit shows that there's only 26 currently. So, that's the one good set that's been submitted to the city.
But when you physically count the spots, there's only 26.
That's right.
Questions or comments from the board again?
Mr. Chairman, all I've got to say is, obviously, it's not meeting the intent of our rules and regulations, and I know it's a tough situation for them, but if it's not meeting our requirements, we can't really move forward.
Very true. Have they requested any form of deferral for this meeting, in any way, shape?
They have not.
Written or verbal?
The only contact I had was email, and I asked them to bring, if the survey was done, and they said that it was, I asked them to bring that with them tonight, so I don't know, they may still show up, I suppose, but...
Let's give them an opportunity, if everybody doesn't mind. Can we move this item to third to last? Is that across the board? Give them an opportunity to show up, and we'll move on to item number five, and work back to that one. Item number five. Final plat, Randall Malone Subdivision requested by Russell White and Associates. Property located at Jefferson Pike and Ridgemont Drive, tax map 18J, Group A, Parcel 6. R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Emma Jean Johnson and Randall Malone. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This property is located at the corner of Ridgemont Drive and Jefferson Pike, and it is zoned R2, and you can see there on the screen, there's quite a bit of R2 zoning around this property. And the purpose of this plat is to create one new lot, so they are subdividing the existing lot, and both of the new lots would meet the minimum requirement, the minimum size requirement for R2, which is 10,000 square feet, and there's no preliminary plat required with this project since it's a minor plat, and they're not proposing any new roads or infrastructure. And I think they've addressed what few comments there were from the workshop, although I think Mr. Leach had a comment for removing certificates, so I'll let him speak to that.
Mr. Leach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. They did include on their plat approvals for water, sewer, and roadways. Those approvals are typically only if they're installing new, so I won't sign off on them if they're there, so we're at an impasse, so to speak.
Okay, so they're currently on the plat?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a representative for this project here? Can you step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, sir?
Randall Malone. I live in 3030 Chandler Court in Murfreesboro.
Thank you, sir. There is one item of some language that needed to be removed from the plat. Were you aware of that?
Negative. It's the first I've heard of it.
Mr. Leach?
Something removed? Like, the buildings have been removed?
No, the wording. Mr. Leach, if you'd explain it to the applicant, please.
There are three approval certificates for the City Engineer or Public Works Director for water, roadway, and sewer. Those are typically only for extensions of waters, roadways, and sewer, and your plat is not extending any. You have existing service already, so I won't be approving the construction of them. So typically, we ask that those approvals be removed because I can't sign off on something that you're not building, and this was brought up at the workshop.
Okay. Might have missed that at the workshop, but we are not building anything, and I don't remember signing in for any extension of water or sewer or anything. I was going to let whoever buys the lot itself request for the building permits and...
Yeah, that's correct. It's the fact that you're not building something means I need to have what was put on the plat removed.
So, you're not the surveyor, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so you'll need to have your surveyor contact, either Adam or myself.
Oh, he put something on here that I don't know about?
Yeah, he'll have to change it.
I was like, oh, okay.
Yeah, the surveyor will have to change it, and then reprint and resubmit.
Okay, no extension of current sewer-water electric.
He'll just remove the three certifications.
Okay. I have no issue with that.
Okay, so our best option would be to defer this item to workshop, have, give the customer an opportunity to remove it. So, would you like to request a deferral so you can get that taken care of, and we'll see you next month?
Please.
Absolutely, sir. We'll consider this item deferred, and we'll see you at workshop next month.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, item number six. Site plan revision, Scott Equipment requested by former engineering. Property located on Waldron Road, tax map 15, parcel 170.03, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Scott Equipment Company, LLC. Mr. Logan.
This item is withdrawn.
Thank you, sir. Next item. Final plat, Lot 4B of Interchange City Industrial Park requested by Grisham Smith. Property located at Waldron Road and Hockwicker Boulevard, tax map 17O, Group A, Parcel 2, and 1.01, C2 Highway Service Zoning District. Property owned by Timothy Young and David Kennedy, Jr. Mr. Logan.
This is item seven, and it's connected to eight, and they have deferred.
They have deferred? So, item eight has deferred as well. We're going to move on to item number 10. Amendment to the zoning ordinance, amend 5.053.2E.4. And 5.053E.4. Increase maximum building height in certain districts presented by Mr. Logan. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. If you recall from the workshop, this ordinance will allow taller buildings to be built in certain areas of Laverne, and there were three areas from last month that we were looking at, which was C2, C3, and I-2 zones, and the discussion that night was such that I-2 should not be included, so that has been removed since the workshop. So now, the current ordinance you have would only allow a taller building in C2 and C3.
Thank you, sir. I'll one second to read over this real fast. Any questions or comments in regards to this ordinance from the board?
Daniel, have you had a chance to review this?
Yes, I have reviewed this and gave my comments to staff at this point.
Okay.
And everything's been clarified through legal?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, as a board member, the appreciation for the removal of the I-2.
Absolutely. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A favorable recommendation.
To approve a favorable recommendation.
We have a motion to give a favorable recommendation? Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will be sending a favorable recommendation for this item to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Item number 11. Amendment to the zoning ordinance, amend 4.070 standards for signs restricting portable signs on all city property, presented by Mayor Cole and Mr. Logan. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This ordinance would make changes to signs on city property, and the intent is to restrict portable signs on city property, and the ordinance that was presented two weeks ago had some changes and some, I guess you'd say revisions, that needed to be made to make sure that this is covering all the signs that the city wants to prohibit. So, I'm not sure the version tonight prohibits all the signs that the city wants to prohibit, so we just need some clarification on that. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in.
Please.
This is something I've been, I think we should, and I'll make this motion, that we should defer this to next month's workshop. This way, we've got plenty of time to go through this. This is something that we want to do right the first time. I know Graham has had some ideas. We want to get, you know, Daniel's revisions. Aaron, I believe you were pretty vocal during that discussion, and we just, we need to come up with something that's 100% that we can move forward on, and I think giving us another month to work on that would be, you know, fair to everyone. So, that's my motion, is to defer this to next month.
We have a motion to defer...
I'll second.
For the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mayor Cole. We'll go back to the LaPorte Building. So, the site plan for the LaPorte Building requested by Dale and Associates. Mr. Logan has already given us an update. I wanted to give the customer an opportunity to at least show up, but they have not, so unfortunately, we must proceed forward at this time. I will entertain a motion on this item, item number three.
Make a motion to deny the applicant due to the items as listed in the report by the staff.
We have a motion to deny the item. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And at this point, I believe I'm going to turn the meeting over to the Vice Chair and excuse myself. Correct, Mr. Logan? Back to item number four. Thank you. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. All right. Site plan U-Haul requested by SEC Engineering. Property located at 511 New Paul Road, tax map 017, parcel 40, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Amerco Real Estate Company. Mr. Logan.
Sorry, I went back to four because I thought we were going in order. Okay. So, this is site plan approval for the U-Haul facility on New Paul Road, and you remember from last month, they're proposing several buildings, but the main building will be four stories and will be climate-controlled, and here's some site photos. There's a sign they have up, and it's vacant land today, and the proposed four-story building, they call Building A, and in the back would be RV parking, and I think most all of that is covered, or at least it's proposed to be covered, parking, and then on the perimeter, they have these four buildings that are storage buildings, and they would be one-story, all one-story buildings on the perimeter. So, this property is already zoned I-2 Heavy Industrial, and it does allow self-storage. They did go to the Board of Zoning Appeals in March, and they received permission to do truck rental and equipment rental at the same location, so that has already been completed. Let's see, the total space in Building A is 129,000 square feet, and remember, it is a four-story building, so it's almost 130,000 square feet, and then, including the other four buildings, it comes to 138,000 square feet, and they did submit full architectural elevations, and I went ahead and added those to the PowerPoint, and they're in your packets. They're large prints that are in color, and one thing you'll notice, so at the workshop, they had nine colors. They had these five that are shown at the bottom of your architectural elevations, and then this Sierra orange was never shown. So, this main architectural element here, this Sierra orange needs to be added to these five, so it's really a total of six colors. But last, two weeks ago, they had nine colors, so they're down from nine to six, so I wanted to make sure to go over that with you all tonight. It looks like they did remove the diamond pattern. It almost looked like a checkerboard, if you remember, and I did bring one copy of the old set, and I showed Mr. Coats, if you want to see what it looked like two weeks ago and how they changed it. So, that's been removed from this northeast elevation, and it's also been removed from the other side, which is the southwest, excuse me, southeast elevation, and other than that, it doesn't appear they've made any structural changes to the exterior materials. They've just changed the colors and shuffled some of those around, and then reduced it from nine to six. Also, they, I've emailed back and forth with them about a materials board, and that was one of the comments from two weeks ago, so they're supposed to submit a full materials board, and I believe that covers everything, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
All right. Any questions for staff? Do we have any representatives from this project? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Zach Woolpart, 1217 Saturn Drive, 37217. I work for SEC, the engineering.
Jeff Porter, 1398 Station Drive. I'm the company president for U-Haul Nashville.
You brought the color board for me, is that what you brought? Thank you, sir.
Want to bring it to you?
No, just leave there, let someone else see it. On the blue-green, I don't know what you want to call it.
Aquarium.
Aquarium, where's that going to go?
It's just a, if you look on the front of the building where the showroom is located at, it's just a small piece right above it to draw attention to the showroom.
Okay, so it's the...
Yeah, it's very small.
The roof, the coverage.
Part of that wave at the top. One thing that was discussed at the workshop was landscaping, so did we, was any additional landscaping added to the rear areas where you've got mainly the storage of the vehicles and a few storage units?
Yes, I believe you should have an updated landscape plan, especially along that buffer along the apartments. We have improved that landscaping. Those are five foot wide, eight foot tall at the time of planting evergreens, and pretty densely packed in there, so that should, you know, give you some pretty good screening, especially along where the apartments are, and then we have changed the perimeter fence around that storage area to be an eight-foot tall opaque fence. It's no longer a chain link, and then there's also additional plantings along there and along the parking spaces to help screen that from the surrounding neighbors.
Can you guide us to your fence detail?
I do not have a specific detail for the fence. I could provide that to you if you want.
Tell me in words again, then.
I do not have a deep...
No, no, not the explanation. I understand your explanation, but describe the fencing.
Eight-foot tall opaque fence, probably some kind of ventile siding or something to screen those areas really well.
So, if you're in the apartment complex, existing buildings are looked across, would you be able to see the building?
You might be able to see the top of the building because it's four feet tall, but if you're probably down at ground level, it would probably be kind of difficult.
I'll say to my fellow board members, the opportunity presented itself for me to visit a very similar structure over on Moore's Lane in the Cool Springs area, and I'm very impressed with this facility. I think it can be an asset to our community. The fact that, in addition to storage and the things that have been discussed, bicycle racks are available, a lot of things that consumers would like for packing and storing, you know, even inside their homes. Where can I find proper-sized cardboard boxes and bubble wrap and these kind of things? I think that, I think that this facility can really be an asset to our community.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, what was on the colors. I think reducing it down, I think suits the city as well as yourselves.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept a submitted.
All right, we have a motion to accept a submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Motion passes.
We have to vote.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right. Now the motion.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome to Laverne, guys.
Thank you.
Is that the last? Item four. All right, next item. Rezoning. Trying to find it here. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, rezoning of property requested by Michael Bannister. 9.5 acres, property located on Sanford Road, tax map 28, parcel 1.01. Current zoning district, agricultural. Proposed zoning district, R3, high-density residential. Property owned by Terry Van Winkle Trust. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a rezoning request for 9.5 acres, and it is located between Cheney and Sanford Road. You can see here in the image on the screen, the, almost a fork in the road, but this property falls... But this property falls between Cheney and Sanford. Doesn't go all the way up to the intersection, but it's south of that point and nine and a half acres. It is zoned agriculture, and the request is to rezone to high-density residential, which is R3. And the applicant shared some at the workshop that they would likely pursue townhomes at this site if they were rezoned to R3. You can see there's a mixture of R2 and R3, although R3 doesn't touch, doesn't technically touch this site. It's off to the north here. But this very dark, like, brick color is R2. You can see a lot of R2. And then this purple and green is a retired R2 district that's no longer in use. So it does have a lot of R2 around it, but there is an area north. But it's in a lot of different parcels, so it's kind of chopped up, but it is zoned R3. Let's see. I know at the workshop, there was some discussion of Sanford Road and discussion about the traffic on that road and also how wide the road is in places. See, I think there's no technical items since it's just a rezoning request. So that completes the report. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any representative for this project? Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Michael Bannister, 3204 Abbott's Lane, Smyrna.
Do we have any questions from the board?
I'll start off. I mean, I'm not a big fan of the area for putting R3 with the existing properties there as far as R2 and more valuable homes in the area. With it not being a, I'm almost classed, it's almost not quite spot zoning, but it's close thereof. I just don't see it's going to work with the road infrastructure we have there. And the round of traffic through there is going to be a problem for the city, I believe.
I concur with that perspective. And again, the main focus for me is it being completely surrounded by the R2 zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for an unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen citing that this is not a character-enhancing project. There's also concerns with our infrastructure surrounding it.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion for an unfavorable recommendation. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion denied. Okay, is that, was that it?
Bonds.
Bonds, our last one. Okay. All right, and our last item, bonds and letters of credit.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Board, at the back of your packet in rather small print, since I tried to condense it down onto one eight and a half by 11, you'll see our list of current bonds. The only significant change has been the bonding of Lakewood's Phase 10 and the amount of $70,600. So they will eventually be able to start building those homes here shortly. And some of our older maintenance bonds have fallen off and have been totally accepted into the city. If you have any other questions, let me know.
All right.
Nope.
No questions? All right. Without any further questions, meeting is adjourned.